You are unmuted.
Recording has started.
All right, good evening, everybody. And welcome to our city council study session for March 23rd, 2020. I will call the meeting to order. And please call the order.
Deputy Mayor Decourcy?
Here.
Councilmember Baggett? Councilmember Baggett?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Giraj? Councilmember Giraj? Councilmember Malinga?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Councilmember Trump Manuel?
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Any announcements, reports, or presentations? Okay, I've got a couple of items I'd like to address under announcements here. First of all, last week's council meeting, Councilmember Sterns and Councilmember Trump Manuel, perhaps others, thanked the mayor for her actions that she's taken during this time. And I would also like to say thank you as well for the direct actions that Mayor Fack has taken, swift actions, and appropriate actions during this time. This is definitely not business as usual. Want to thank IT and others for helping us to be able to do these Zoom meetings, to conduct our council meetings and our study sessions remotely, as we're all doing our part to try and have the social distance and stay as safe as we can during this time. As we saw tonight in our earlier meeting, as we're not doing business as usual, we have done some other ordinances and resolutions that have taken other actions that will facilitate and assist our residents and our businesses. I was pre-stacked to sat in a meeting after our discussions last week with our interviews for the city attorney position and participated in the meeting with the mayor held with the department directors. And I have to tell you that the directors are on board. They've brought forward some recommendations and suggestions to move forward. We had the discussion about facilitating our businesses with the eviction issues and as we work it on tonight during our special council meeting and doing what we can to not only assist the residents but also to assist the businesses during this time. So, thank you, Mayor, thank you, staff, and thank you, everybody, for your patience as we go through this process and continue to work through this time. And hopefully, we'll be all back in very good business here very shortly. So with that, we'll move on to our agenda items for council discussion. And the first item is ordinance number 6757. Deputy Chief Callier?
Can you hear me okay?
Do we have a presentation on 6757?
Checking.
Assistant Chief Callier is not available. This is Kendra Kommo, the city attorney. I'm happy to speak with ordinance 6757.
Thank you, city attorney.
Assistant ordinance makes a minor modification with last December. The council looked at our three definitions in the animal code and removed any three specific designations for potentially dangerous or dangerous dog. Ordinance number 6757 makes an additional minor change, and that is to remove the behavioral certification for dangerous dogs. Because dangerous dogs have exhibited a propensity to harm either a person or another individual, looking at feedback science and talking to animal control experts, the decision has been made to remove that behavioral certification to allow lesser restraints for dangerous dogs. It's a fairly minor change considering what you've already looked at. And then city staff is looking at the animal code in total to see if there's any additional changes to bring back to it a later time. But for now, it's only the behavioral certification issue that's being changed. And I'm happy to answer any questions or Assistant Chief Callier's [inaudible].
Any questions from council? Okay, no questions? All right, thank you, Kendra. And thank you, Assistant Chief Callier on this. So we will move on to our next item. Ordinance number 6765. We have two different names on here for presentations. I'm actually assuming a presentation, but ordinance number 6765.
Let's start off the presentation and then Mr. Kommo and city attorney Kommo will be on the line as well to help answer any questions. So, over the last six months or so, we've been working on an update to the code related to purchasing and contracting within the city, primarily to try to clean up the code and bring it into kind of what our current work processes are, as well as the technology changes that have happened and specifically related around the P-card processing that we have started doing as opposed to purchasing the process, which was the bulk of what the city needs to do. So with that, my thoughts were that we would kind of walk through what those changes were. And then if council has questions, we can discuss each of those changes since there's quite a bit of also changing in location of information in there. So not necessarily changing the information, but just moving it around and putting it so that it's more in the correct locations for the topics that are being covered. Does that sound appropriate?
That sounds appropriate.
So on page 10 of your packet is where we start with the purchasing policy, chapter 310. And the first section in that is 310010 that we are proposing to remove. And we're proposing to remove that because that's not how the bulk of our small purchases are actually happening, because we're using the P-card process. And so it's a little different process than what's actually written out in the code. So what's there doesn't really apply to how we actually process. Any questions on that?
Kendra, just on contract authorization limits under 3.10, section A, we're raising that up to $100,000. What was the previous? It's marked out, but I can't read it.
Previously, that was, yeah, that was the next subject. So previously, that was $50,000. So this, the authority level that the mayor has for entering into contracts that are not budgeted. So if there's a contract that we plan to do, or a construction project we plan to do, or consultant agreement we plan to do, that has been included in the budget. The budget authority, the way this code has been written over the many years, budget authority allows the mayor to enter into those contracts. So the $50,000 limit was what the mayor previously had for anything that was unbudgeted. What we're proposing in this is increasing that up to the $100,000, as we have seen over the last several years with inflation and everything else going on, that we're seeing that that might be a more appropriate limit for the mayor to have for that unbudgeted operation. If an unbudgeted contract is actually approved, then there's a secondary step that needs to happen to actually allocate that budget through a budget amendment process with the council.
Great, okay, thank you.
So that is the primary changes in that new section, 310010, on page 10. Going on to page 11, we had one additional change in that section, and that was to increase the mayor's authority from $25,000 to $50,000 as it relates to purchase of property. Yeah, for real estate, for that unbudgeted situation. So again, that's at a lower limit, but the reality is that there's not a whole lot of property that you can purchase for under $25,000. And so it felt appropriate to increase that limit as well. Any questions on that section?
Questions, council?
Okay. So moving to the next section, which is titled Contract Amendments. So this one, we have several changes that we are proposing in that, trying to simplify what this is. So previously, this was written specifically for professional and personal service contracts. And instead, we decided to take this and the next section that was previously in code and combine it into one section just covering contract amendments. So whether it's construction contracts, personal services, or professional services, we're covering all of that in one section of code. So that's the main reason that you see the strikeout and then an additional added language on the next page. One change that, if we're good with increasing the mayor's authority for unbudgeted projects up to $100,000, in section A, 1, 2, and 3 of that section, I would also propose that we change that $50,000 level to $100,000 to match the mayor's authority. This has to do with when we actually do changes to contracts or bring unbudgeted contracts in front of council. So basically, it's same premise, is if we get over $100,000, that approval would have to come through council. But if it's under $100,000, then the mayor would have the authority to approve those contracts. Does that make sense?
Makes sense. Any questions, council? Okay, Ingrid.
Okay. So on page 1226, you'll see this is where we're combining a section of previous code with the previous section. So we're not necessarily changing anything significantly in that section, other than determining who to use. So we're going from what was previously termed the total maximum contract amount to the authorized total maximum contract amount. So this has to do when we do construction projects and the contingency that we have authorized through code for what change orders we can actually process before we have to come back to council for additional approval. So we're not changing any of those limits. It's just moving the language in there to be more appropriate to the maximum contract amount. So we can't even reduce that maximum. But if we need to go over that maximum authorized amount, then we come back to council for approval of those change orders. Okay?
Great.
And so the next section after that was deletion, because it's a minor section.
I'm trying to raise my hand. I don't think that works. I have a question. On page 12, it sounded like someone stepped on them. Why are we striking through B?
So the way that B and C were written was a little confusing for staff. And so what we're basically saying with revising it to the total authorized amount, that is, so if we award a contract for, let's say, a million dollars, the way the code is written is that we can, we have authority to do change orders for up to 10% or $25,000, whichever is greater in that, as long as we have budget. So we can go into up to a million, $75,000 contract amount without coming back to council. If we need to go over that, we would have to come back to council. And so what you had under B and under C, that language wasn't really adding anything to what we were trying to do.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Ingrid?
How often do we go above the $50,000?
So you're talking about the $50,000 for the mayor's authority?
Right, that we have to raise it up to, I know cost of living is going up and stuff, and we should be able to have the money in there, but how often would, do you think we are going to meet her to be able to authorize $100,000?
So it depends on what the situation might be, that we might need contracting authority for, but every situation is different. And this would be the things that are not always budgeted. So it's unplanned things, the things that come up throughout the year. I would say you might see that two or three times a year right now, that that might come into play, that you're seeing requests for additional budget adjustments because it's over that $50,000 limit right now. So we're waiting to do that contract until a budget amendment can be made. Okay. Thank you. So moving on to page 13. So we were proposing to delete paragraph 310028 on that, and that was a holdover from previous process and the way we used to do public works committee. So this is how we used to initiate projects and start a project. We've gone away from that in how we're using the study sessions. So this was just an old environment of code that we had to remove. For the next section, it's really just cleanup of making it consistent with state law and how we do competitive negotiations. So competitive negotiations are typically your electronic-type contracts, your IT-type contracts, which state law allows us to do those competitively negotiated contracts. We just wanted to tie in that state law to that, and so we don't have to continuously modify our code. We suggested deleting 310030 Administrative Procedures Authority on page 14, simply because it's a remnant of when the original code was adopted in like 1957, and doesn't need to actually be codified. Under 310040 Emergency Purchases Authorization, the changes there from the city attorney is to make that consistent with state law and to reference the RCW so that we don't have to modify that code going forward as state law changes as to what we can actually do emergency contracting for. And then some, under section 310050 Sold Source Purchasing on page 14, this is some very minor typo correction. Any questions on 310, on chapter 310? Okay. So chapter 312, which is Public Contracts, we have a few must-uses in that under 312020, which is on page 16. We are actually moving to move language that's actually further in this code up to this section because it makes more sense for it to be in this section. So it's not really modifying the previous code, it's just relocating it. We have some RCW corrections under 312050 on page 17, and that's just how they changed that reference. On page 18, we have [inaudible 16]. So this is one section of code that we're proposing that we remove. This is the requirement for us to bring the award of a construction project through council. So at this point, the council approves off doing a construction project, a capital project through our budgeting process and through the CFP. And then the city moves forward with doing those projects. So right now, on the consent agenda, you'll see the award of the construction contract. We're proposing to remove that so that the city can move those projects to construction faster and more efficiently. The council also currently sees a monthly report from the public works staff on all contracts that we have going on and the status of those contracts. So we feel like there's a good ability to keep you informed of what's happening on projects, as well as we come and we provide that briefing every two to three months on where we're at on projects.
You got a question on that? So this is related to contracts with bids that are greater than the limits. So in your reports, what we see, typically under the consent agenda, we have that information that shows the bid amounts, the bidders and all that. Will we still see that same information in the reports?
Yeah, so if a project is to be awarded that exceeds the budget amount that we have for the project, the council would actually have to see that and take action for us to award because it would be outside the mayor's authority.
Okay.
Under the way the purchasing code is written. And so we felt that that was covered so that you would always see it. Again, if the change order comes in that puts that project over the budget authority, then again, council would see that through an action process in order to have the approval to go above that budget authority. That would also then be followed up, most likely, with a budget amendment that the council would see.
And then for projects that don't exceed budget authority, will we still see the bid results and the contract amount and all those different items that we normally see?
We can provide that and do that more as a report to council of each of the bid openings. That would be an easy process to do.
Yeah, I think I'd like to say that, hopefully, other council members, if you want to chime in, but it kind of gives us an idea of, you know, not only the competitive bidding process, but who the awards are made to, what the bids were, the spread of the bids, all the different items that are going to the competitive bidding, so we have a better understanding of what's happening within the city related to our bidding process.
Yeah, we would be happy to provide that memo format to the council at each bid opening.
Great, thank you.
Okay. And then I think the last change we have is on page 20, under 312090, the Small Works Roster. And this is where we were suggesting removing some language that's unnecessary in how the Small Works roster process works. And then the last sentence of that section is what we moved to the earlier section of code. Any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Ingrid, I want to go back to 3.12.60.
Okay.
Page 18. So when we say, when we are striking out the amendment, the city council shall award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, how are we going to go, how then are we going to evaluate who we're going to choose?
So currently, the city staff evaluate all bidders and go through the bidding criteria that's required in every contract and go to a responsible responses bidder process and verifications that are necessary. And so what the council's seeing in the consent agenda item is a recommendation from staff to award or to not award. And so the staff would still be doing that, and administratively, myself or other directors on those projects would be making that determination to award that project or not.
So then you would come and let us know that this one particular contract is contractors who we're going to award it to kind of, or give us two or three to decide on.
So unfortunately, the way public bidding works is we have to go with the lowest responsible bidder, so the council doesn't have that choice as to who to award to. We basically, we go through that evaluation process, figure out who is the lowest responsible bidder, and then that is who the city awards the contract to.
Okay, so is that something we can see?
And that is what Deputy Mayor Decourcy was asking for, was for us to provide that that key information we currently provide in that consent agenda item with kind of what the bid results were and verifications and the fact that we're awarding the project.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, Ingrid, also a follow-up on Councilor Giraj's question, one last question on that. So if we have a circumstance where we have all of the bidders exceed the engineer's estimate or we throw the bids out and start over again, how will council know that that's taking place?
So if all the bids come over our engineer's estimate and are beyond our budget decisions, so they're outside the budget of the project, the staff would not be able to make that decision. It would still have to come to council if we're choosing to award. If we're saying all of the bids are, that we want to reject all bids and go back out for new bids, that would have to be some fairly significant bid issues in that for us to make that recommendation, because again, the way state law works is it's based on a lowest responsible bidder process.
Right.
So that's certainly something we can come back and talk to council on. Typically, I don't think we've done those by resolution. I think we've still done those by consent, the way the council run the past.
I think you're, yeah, you're right, I think so. And I appreciate it, I think it's just, you know, just information so, again, we have an idea in that rare circumstance that ever occurs.
Yeah, I mean, it's very rare that we reject all bids.
Sure. Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that section? Okay, so then, again, the next changes were on page 20 to section 312090 related to the Small Works roster. So for those council members that haven't been involved in contracting with us for the last 20 years, Small Works roster contracting is really small projects that we utilize a list of contractors that MRSC actually maintain and that we can award projects to. So again, this first paragraph was really kind of unnecessary information that was in the code, except for the last sentence in that, and we moved that to that earlier section of this section of code. Any questions on that? And the very last one that we have is on the last, page 22 of 26. It's paragraph 110 on on-call contracting. And we are just adding in a reference to the RCW as the recent [inaudible 18] state law actually allows a little bit more leeway on unit-priced contracting, and so we wanted to add that into the potential alternative contracting that we could do. Any other questions?
Any questions, council?
I couldn't answer anything. But I had a question on the last section. You talked about when we struck the language on top of Small Works roster. And there was a last sentence that just prohibits breaking projects up into smaller. Does that prohibition still remain somewhere?
It does. It is back on page 16 under [inaudible 18].
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any questions on that ordinance, council?
Okay. So if there aren't any further questions, our plan is to bring this back to council to act on at the next full council meeting.
Very good. Ingrid, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is ordinance number 6766, city attorney Kommo.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Decourcy and council. So ordinance number 6766 is a minor change. It is not substantive in any way. It is just a procedural change. Oh, I'm starting my [inaudible 19]. So our office code, section 9.22010C prohibits controlled substance possession. We define controlled substance under the office code mirroring the language of RCW 6950, which is the state law for controlled substances. Our city code references subsection in the RCW that recently was changed either by the code reviewer or the state legislature, although the state legislature didn't issue any legislation specifically. So you'll see in the ordinance, in section, section 1B, it is under [inaudible 21]. We're just removing the reference to subsection S in RCW 6950 101. And that's to allow us to comply with the state law and to not have completely tied to those subsections as they get changed frequently by the code revisers. So again, no substantive change that we're requesting at this time. It's just a minor deletion so that we can charge appropriately and not be citing the incorrect subsection that has now been changed by the state legislature.
Okay, great. Any questions, council? Guess not. Thank you, Kendra. All right, that concludes our agenda items for council discussion. So we'll move on to other discussion items. I've got a couple of items I just wanted to bring up briefly under that topic. First one to council, if you recall, hopefully, you each received an email and a call apart copy on what we're looking at for making motions during the council meetings. And hopefully, you've all had a chance to review that document. And if anybody had any comments or questions on how we're looking at motions being made through the special focus area chairs or alternate or any council member making motions that we can do during those meetings. So any comments or questions on that? Okay, hearing done? Yes, go ahead.
I agree. I think that that would make the meeting go a lot smoother to, that way you don't have to be doing all of them yourself, and that way it'll allow us, council members, to be able to initiate a motion.
And that way it will allow us council members to be able to initiate a motion. And as you said, if the chair doesn't want to do it, they can pass it on to the vice, to the second.
Very good.
Vice president.
Right, and just a reminder again, now any council member can make a motion. So it is suggested as you read the document that if you choose to make a motion on a particular ordinance resolution that you would like to do so, just communicate that with the special focus area chair and the libido. So I always make a little note, my margins of who's making the motion during the meeting. And that's again, as Councilor Trump said, to make it go smoother and kind of no interruptions as we go through the process from there, asking for more resolutions in ordinances. Any other comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Secondly, the mayor mentioned it earlier this evening in our special focus area meeting, but during this very unusual time, as I mentioned prior to this meeting starting during announcements, the mayor is having regular and frequent meetings with the department directors related to the COVID-19 issue and various items that we can do in the city to facilitate and assist residents and businesses and any other entity that may, may need some assistance with this. So with that, as the mayor did mention, asking council to look also for suggestions, recommendations, anything that you folks feel that we can do within the city and facilitate and assist the mayor in her administrative duties and in the emergency declarations to continue moving forward with what we need to move forward with during this time. So if you have suggestions or recommendations or any items like that, just go ahead and probably better during now because we're moving remotely, to send an email to the mayor and to me and also a C C to Antoinette. So we have that going. Please refrain from sending it to all council members. So again, just to the mayor and to me and Antoinette. And the mayor will take a look at that and see if there's any opportunity to act upon those suggested recommendations. It's been said by the governors, it's been said by the presidents, it's been said by the mayor, it's been said by all of us, but we are all in this together. And it will take a collective effort for us to work through these issues and hopefully in a shorter period of time rather than a longer period of time, we'll see a resolve to this and get back to business as usual. So any comments or suggestions on that?
Deputy Mayor Decorsi?
Any new business?
Deputy Mayor Decorsi?
Well, thank you everybody for your patience as we go through this process in our virtual meetings.
Deputy Mayor?
With that, we are adjourned.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
The mayor has something to say, please.
Go ahead.
So he already adjourned, is that all right? Did you already adjourn?
No, yes.
He did, he already adjourned. Thank you, the meeting has already been adjourned.
Okay, thank you.